Morning, I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this eighth day of December 2022. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skipper.
Present.
I knew it.
I'm not kidding.
Lots of presents for Christmas, right? All right, so we are starting with a proposed change to chapter 330-185. It is a, it relates to change of zone applications. We're going to be joined by Town Planning and Development Administrator Janice Sheeran, also Deputy Town Attorney Kathleen Murray, and Senior Planner Michelangelo Lieberman. So, Janice, you want to tell us what this is about?
Sure, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen, but good morning, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. I'm sort of the why, and she's the what, so we'll go into what we've been talking about first, and then I'll jump out and ask the why.
Excellent. Good morning, board members. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So you should have a draft local law in front of you. I'll give you a little bit of background. On March 25th, 2008, by Local Law Number 15 of 2008, the Town Board adopted a law requiring a public work session prior to the submission of a formal change of zone application. With no changes or review of that provision since then, which is almost 15 years, the purpose of this law is to take another look at that provision and clarify it and provide an update. While it does look like there are a lot of changes, there really is just some shifting of existing provisions, and so that's why there's a lot of underlining. But substantively, the biggest change can be found at subsection B, which is on the bottom of page one of the proposed law. That provision now requires that all applicants submit a preliminary application. Once the town clerk receives a preliminary application, the Town Board may, in its discretion and by Town Board resolution, choose not to consider a proposed project. So typically, all applicants under the current law would be entitled to a work session discussion. But this now requires the Town Board to determine whether it wants to even take that first initial step and allow a work session discussion. In making this determination, the board shall receive a written recommendation from your Town Planning and Development Administrator. And factors to be considered in making this initial determination include, but shall not be limited to, the project's compatibility with the town's land use plans and goals, the surrounding land uses and zoning designations, and the town's comprehensive plan and any updates. After receiving that preliminary application, if the board chooses that it would like to obtain further information and input on the proposed project, then it may elect to schedule a work session discussion. So basically, the option to have a work session is no longer automatic. If the Town Board does schedule a work session discussion, then the applicant shall present the project and the Department of Land Management Administrator shall submit a report and recommendation to the Town Board for its consideration. After any work session discussion, the Town Board shall elect whether to consider a formal application, and so that process hasn't changed. That is how it is, that remains how it is today. So that's the meaningful change here. The rest of the law really remains the same but for its placement. Referrals are still the same. The requirements for the preliminary application are generally the same as that which was previously required for the work session, but for the addition of two things. One is colored renderings, and two is a demonstration that the proposed project conforms with the goals and objectives of the town's comprehensive plan. So that was an addition that I think your Department of Land Management Administrator felt was definitely necessary to be part of that preliminary application. The resolution scheduling a public hearing is on for your consideration this Tuesday. If you're so inclined to allow that public hearing, then that would be held on January 10th.
I'm still, I'm a little confused as to why this is necessary. So it's creating an additional step?
It is.
Basically, so right now, we sort of pro forma, allow a work session, so the whole board gets to discuss it. In this, the board is somehow discussing without a work session to decide whether it even wants a work session. So it's like a work session to decide if it's going to have a work session?
No, it's not a work session. It's, um, thank you, if I could answer that.
Yeah, maybe you can clarify that.
So the why is that, you know, you have only a limited amount of time, we only have a limited amount of time, and we also have a lot of requests all over the place for things that may or may not be appropriate. And when you schedule a formal work session, it, whether or not this is true, it seems like you're, you know, you're entertaining this now. You know, people get riled up and upset, where, what are you doing? But sometimes, on its face, we can see it and be like, this is a bad idea. I mean, you just know it. So we can tell you that. You could still say, well, I want to hear more about it anyway. You could still say, I want to go to that next step, but there should be a point where you can just say, you know what, let's save everyone time and money and say, we're not taking this up right now. We're not looking at this discretionary.
I mean, it used to be just if we go right to public hearing. Then we added this step before the public hearing, which is a work session, and now we're adding something before even a work session.
Yes, and the something before the work session is to say, we're not interested. And your discretionary powers are there to actually be able to say that.
There is a debate about...
The Town Board Resolution, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes.
So the debate would be, if you choose not to schedule a public work session, it has to be within a Town Board work session, excuse me, a Town Board resolution indicating that you will not consider that. And at that time, you can have that discussion in public as to whether or not you want to go, you want to schedule that work session or not. And this isn't removing your ability. I mean, you can always schedule a work session at the time if you decide you want to, but this isn't making it automatic. This is making the applicant show you why they deserve that first discussion.
Does this also apply to changes from one nonconforming use to another?
Not at the moment, no. This is just 330-185 for change of zones.
Hmm. And there's no constitutional right to appear in front of the body?
No, there's no right to rid of mandamus. There's a very recent case law that comes out of the Second Department, Town of Brookhaven, that confirms and affirms that you do not have to consider, particularly if you codify it in your local code, you do not have to consider every application that comes before you, and there's no right to have that considered.
So, and the other avenues, or I guess a use variance or something like that, if somebody's...
Sure, yes.
Could try to get a use variance that allow that use, they're trying to get, that they would do if the zone was conforming in a nonconforming zone.
Right.
That's hard to do.
Like I say, from experience, and I was involved with that Brookhaven case, but from being on both sides of the tables, there are times in my career I represented the other side, and it actually, I think, looking at it from both sides, I think it can be very helpful, because there are times when, if you're representing somebody who wants to make an application or something, but it's, the board, or the planning department finds that it's so clearly against the comp plan or just the zoning of the area, whatever, in general, that if you have a, just a quick rejection, it's almost a relief to the applicant sometimes. They know right off the bat, but they don't have to put any further resources into it. I think in some ways, it's...
There's something, though, that's, doesn't feel right on it. I mean, it's, because it's a work session, right? So the work, I set the agendas for the work session. I decide what the topics will be on the work session, and now I'm potentially being told by a resolution that I can't put something onto a work session.
Well, it's the recommendation of the plant, of your planner, of your professional planning department.
No, you, your board says, we're not considering this. It's not going on the work session.
Right, but the board is now directing, I set the agendas for the work session.
Well, you're right, Mr. Supervisor. The board is asking, is making it clear...
The board is now tying my hand and saying, you can't put that as a work session agenda to discuss that, because we have voted to forbid you from putting that on the agenda.
Not forbid, but perhaps at this time, it's not an appropriate, you know, use of our resources or town staff's resources to review this based on the comprehensive plan, based on surrounding...
I feel like there's a different way to do that. If the board says, look, we have no interest in changing the zone, just let...
This is that tool.
But this is letting us do it publicly.
Is the process that, which you're doing it, rather than just informally saying, because I would then go to the applicant and say, listen, I'm not going to review a work session, I'm not going to even do a work session on it, because I don't believe we have board support for...
But then that directs us.
But now you're changing the process to tie my hands and saying, I can't put it on an agenda when I have the right to make the agenda under town law. I just can't even...
But how are you, but this is, this is making you finding out that the board doesn't want to consider it, a public resolution, that people know why we're not considering it.
But it's the will of the board, Mr. Supervisor, to ask you to honor that. And maybe there's no votes for that resolution.
And it's at the advice of the planning. It's not like this is us willy-nilly deciding we're not, I mean, it's going to, there's going to be a written document stating why we should, you know, why planning doesn't feel it warrants a work session and further, and then we as a board decide if we want to have that work session.
I feel like it's affecting the powers of the supervisor.
If you have a, say you had a resolution that said elect to not consider, and you didn't have the votes for it, then they could go to a work session. Then it's not on you to tell the applicant that the board doesn't support it. They'll hear from the board that they don't support it. Yeah, if the board, they don't support it, or you don't have the votes to say they don't support it, and then they go on to part B.
It's the, really, it's the mechanism that is bothering me.
We're open to suggestions. We think it's as per law.
Why would I put something on the agenda if the board didn't want it considered even?
You wouldn't, but it's taking that off of you to tell the applicant that you don't consider it, that we're not considering it. It makes it, it makes it public, and it makes it public, and there's a written transcript...
It's changing the powers of the supervisor, in my mind. You know, I'm not going to be supervisor for more than another year, but the next supervisor has his hands tied, or hers hands tied, in that they can't, they can set the agenda and put anything they want on there except for this, because you're creating this new system by which, you know, the supervisor cannot set the agenda for work session to a limited extent.
Well, the supervisor could, but the board would have to set a resolution not to hear it. Do I have that correct?
Yes, yes, elect to not consider.
I'm not saying I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah. Have we seen, I haven't heard that many applications that, I don't know, we didn't like, right? If they were coming here, we kind of...
Well, people always say to us, how did we get this far down the road? And why are we this far down if you don't like it?
Well, they've worked with your office before they come with them.
Well, we see things that are, that you, you know, that are clearly spot zoning or some other issue, and we, you know, it's always everyone's right to make an application. But in a discretionary realm, you don't have to do anything. They can make the application, and we can take the application, and we can say, this is spot zoning, and you can say, we're not considering that, and that's the end of it.
I don't think the system's broken.
I asked for this just so we can make that initial, initial thing public and more transparent as to why we're not electing to consider something. Instead of just telling them, I don't have the votes, you know, here it is in writing, we voted, we passed a resolution, these are the reasons why we're not electing to consider it. It makes it very clean, it makes it very public, and everybody has a record of why there was no support.
But in doing so, I feel like you're curtailing the discretion or powers of the town supervisor. I don't like that. So, I mean, there's got to be a better way to do that. I mean, if you want to, when we do hold a work session, we could require that the record be left open a certain amount of time to have more public scrutiny, because once we vote after that work session, we elect to consider an application. Then there's a separate resolution to hold a public hearing on it. And then I understand, you're getting farther and farther down the road.
But Supervisor...
But the work session is in front of the board, it's on TV, it's fully transparent, and if you want more people to know about it, I guess we could leave that record open.
But Supervisor, you just said you wouldn't schedule it for a work session if there wasn't board support. All we're doing is making that board support public. It's all we're doing. So if there is no board support, there's a resolution, and there's no work session.
Well, then there should be some routing process where you can weigh in through a letter. You know, a letter goes out prior to the work session to see if there's any objections. But it still has to be the supervisor's discretion as to whether, if an item gets on the work session...
Well, it says, applicants seeking a zoning map amendment shall follow a preliminary application procedure to determine whether the board will entertain the request. That's what this is saying. So you're saying you don't want to do that because you want to entertain all requests, and then at the end of that work session decide?
If I want to discuss a topic at work session, I want the ability to put it on the agenda. And that topic may be somebody considering a zone change, and now you're saying I can't, potentially.
That was not our intention. Our intention was to make a simple process where we can tell someone, this is not going to work versus a three-month ordeal, and then tell them.
Find a different process, I would rethink it.
Kathleen, a couple of questions. How many, how many public currently with applications that go through the process to elect to consider? These are generally larger applications. Currently, how many public meetings do we have? Or how many opportunities do we have to consider the application in public? We have the elect to consider, and then we have the application itself.
You have the elect to consider, and then it's formal, so it's immediately formal.
And then, right, and each has public hearings?
Sure, I mean, in your formal application, you'll have a lot of public hearings as it relates to substance and also as it relates to SECR, so that could go on for a very long time.
So this would considerably add another public venue to the application process for these larger applications?
It would.
Even though this, this particular portion does not necessarily require a public hearing, it would be done in public and, okay, and the public could come to a public portion three different times?
So maybe a better approach here would have...
Well, if we pass this, it would be three different times if we didn't want it.
Yeah, you kill it before it even goes to work session.
If two town board members, you know, if we had a motion and a second, it would bring it to the public in three different, at three different steps.
Correct, exactly. You're really only seeing it three times if there's no inclination to have that work session.
Two is not enough.
Having a public hearing means people are preparing application materials, renderings... It's also time and money for our staff. To have that public hearing.
So rather than diminishing the powers of the supervisor, why don't, still allow the supervisor to hold work sessions, you know, to set the agenda, but require there be a preliminary hearing before there is a public hearing, a pre-hearing.
That just sends much more formality to the process, I would say. My recommendation would be then not to act at all versus that.
It doesn't require as lengthy a development of the project. So rather than, you have the work session, then from the work session, you decide that it, we're going to hold a preliminary hearing, like the planning board, and then we'll do a final hearing if it gets past the preliminary hearing.
I mean, as a currently...
I feel better about that, because it doesn't affect...
There's no real difference then, then this is, this is...
You're telling the supervisor what he can or she can or can't put on the agenda. There's no other provision in law like that.
But why would you put it on the agenda if there's no support for it?
Right.
Well, I wouldn't.
But that's, we're just making that public.
What you're directing me...
No, we're not, we're making that public, so that you don't have to go to us individually and find out if there's support. It's a public forum, it's a resolution, we all vote on it, and the public all knows whether we are electing to consider or not consider it. It's adding public input, it's adding public oversight to the process.
Right, it's diminishing of the powers of the supervisor, and I can't support it for that reason. Find another way to do it if you want my support.
There's no, there's no way to change it that otherwise.
I'm not going to lessen the power of the supervisor for the next supervisor. So there's plenty of ways where the supervisor can say, I'm not going to put that on the agenda. There's no basis for support, don't waste your time. But now you're creating a law that takes away powers from the supervisor.
It's not taking away your powers. You're still finding out if they're entitled to that process.
Can I just make one note to the...
They're not entitled to a work session if the supervisor doesn't put it on the agenda.
But they are. But then you make that decision. In this code, they are.
But can I just speak for one tiny nuance to that, Mr. Supervisor? And I hear you, I appreciate what you're saying, but under New York State Town Law 62, the Town Board could ask for a special Town Board meeting and could request a supervisor to set a special Town Board meeting.
They can.
So that would be the alternative, which is a little bit more cumbersome, so...
Well, they have that power.
They do.
To call them...
It's not, it's not that much different than what this is asking.
But the work sessions, the agenda are set by the supervisor.
I understand.
So I have a problem with this mechanistically.
I just, the work sessions add a lot more work and time to planning staff that they could put onto other projects if we just publicly say, this doesn't meet our criteria for X, Y, and Z, and we're not going to entertain it.
I'm not going to support a public hearing on it, because it diminishes the power of the supervisor.
Okay.
Find a different way to do it and support a public hearing.
I don't think it does. I think it just makes public what you're doing now...
We disagree.
Before the public, before the work session.
We disagree, but as supervisor, I'm not going to support something that curtails the supervisor's powers. So, any other discussion on it?
Not from staff, I don't think.
I think there's another way to do this.
It's a policy decision.
It is a policy decision, it's up to the board. We're trying to create a way where people are asking us about zone changes all over the town. There's a lot of different ideas and requests, and it, your ability to say, here's what we want, direction to go, and us to do that is limited when we are entertaining all these willy-nilly requests.
Where the request for zone change come to you, or come...
Come to the town clerk, they come to us, and we, it's discretionary, there's no action deadlines or timeframes, and we put them on...
Right, so can you, we require a routing, that you would then route to the Town Board that a request has come in and leave two weeks for comment from the Town Board members, and then the supervisor can look at that and see if there's any objections that have come in?
Right now, the way it works is that you get a public work session. We put you on, it may take a while, but you get a work session, you know, like it's...
Every application.
Every application is guaranteed a work session.
Well, let's change that, so they're not guaranteed a work session.
Well, this is the way, this is what we were doing here. This is how you do that, this is how you do that in a public and transparent manner.
And we wanted to just then offer a recommendation as to why we don't think this should be in the form of a...
But you could say, it does warrant a work session.
Right.
I want to have that. Or they then have it in writing as to why it doesn't, and they can change whatever they're proposing.
Where in the current law does it say it requires a work session?
Prior to the submission of a formal change of zone application, the project will be the subject of a public work session before the Town Board, where the applicant will present the proposed project, and the Land Management Administrator or designee will submit a report.
So why don't we change that to maybe subject, rather than it will be?
Then, then you're taking that out of the public as to why it's not being considered.
But then we have to, we have to give the decision.
Yeah, what's the justification?
Who makes that decision?
That's what we said, this is the justification as to why you don't necessarily get one. Either you, you're going to go forward, either we're going to say, not, you are going to say, not interested, maybe we're interested, yes, we're definitely interested, right? So the not interested is what this is. Like, we're not doing that right now.
It's just so...
And the only reason why you would say you're not interested is because it's so outside, it's so from a field that has nothing to do with anything, and someone's like, hey, I could make a lot of money, you know, we're not doing that. We could still, we could still have a work session on every single application if we choose to.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, but if you, so you say, no, maybe, let's have a work session, let's hear more about it, come in, and then after that work session, we'll elect to consider the formal? Or, no thanks?
Yeah. At the end of the day, I don't think it adds to the hearing, it picks away.
So you're against the no from the outset, you want to have the work session.
I mean, we could change it, there may be a work session. However, I think there should be a preliminary, there should be a stage before the public hearing. So if we held some work session and it seems okay, before we go to a full public hearing, now we do a notice type of meeting.
Quite, quite, can I say something here? Quite often, I, speaking for me, I feel that the first time I hear about something is through a work session. And I understand what you're trying to do, and I think I agree with it, I'm not entirely sure I do. I know, I do believe there should be a process, because quite often, you see something and you go, why are we looking at this?
Right, right, right. And a public gets confused.
Now, you guys, and staff and planning, just using that as an example, should accompany that, and you usually do, but not always, with a reasoning for why that's something that, that we can look at and say, okay, well, this supports why I feel I don't want to support that. It either completely violates the law or whatever. That should have been thrown out in pre-app to begin with, right? When your applicant comes to you and they're suggesting something illegal, what do you do? You say, no. That's the whole point of pre-app, right? So something that gets up to us.
We never say no. We have to give you or the board that says yes or no.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that part of this should be that you guys need to have a better, a better...
It's you that makes the decisions.
That's the proportion, that's the recommendation, that's what we're recommending, that we have.
In the past, we've held work sessions, I'm just thinking of some that we've done, and if we have allowed a public hearing, it's often conditional. We'll accept an application if it's under a certain number of units or whatever, or if it doesn't include access through neighborhoods or things like that.
Separating out the cannot, period, for the maybe and yes. That was the intent.
Some amount to spot zoning, and we'd like to say...
How do we do it with the change of, from one nonconforming use to another? Do they automatically come to the board?
They automatically come, like a process, they come built.
There's no, we can't say, no, we're not going to even hear that, or we have to make a determination that it doesn't meet all those criteria in the code.
It says it has to follow 330-185, so, so, and that's, yes, point one, excuse me. And so it does require that process. So, so everyone has the right to make an application, but you have to also recognize that you, in a zone change, you're not, it's 100% discretionary. You can just say, we're not even...
Going to consider it, but...
Not interested. But you're not having that process here. Here, you have a whole process before you even say yes or no. Sometimes you just want to say, no.
To consider.
To even be looking at it.
Okay, so we would be creating a process to consider an application?
To not consider it.
To not consider an application.
Just give the ability to not consider, you know, really, it's...
You already have the ability, but you have a code that says, first, you got to go through this whole thing, and then we'll tell you. And we're saying, if you already know, why make someone go through all that? Why not just tell them in the first place, not interested? And why aren't you interested? Well, it amounts to spot zoning, the comp plan doesn't say so, you know, this is going to, you know, be egregious in some manner, that we don't like it.
Supervisor's on the right track with the word may there, but we just got to decide who makes that decision, from may to shall or should, I mean...
It's always the board that makes every decision.
Right, so that's, we just have to, and I think you, I think you did do that, but...
Because otherwise, may leaves them in purgatory.
Right, exactly. You have to have a decision maker, which it should be the Town Board, it should be...
And it's also, I mean, the process to get through is lengthy, so if you know right away that you're not going to get to that next step, why would you wait around for six months or four months or three months for a work session?
Exactly.
Well, right, that's, we just want an easier way to be able to say, you're not interested. And have that be transparent and public. But if this is not the way, we're open, that's why we're here. Kathleen has read the case law, she understands what's happened in court related to this, Jim's been involved personally, and so we were trying to mirror those things that the court has already looked at.
I think I understand the intent. I think Councilwoman McNamara wants more public input before we get to further down the road where it's harder to change, right?
No, I'm not looking for public input, I'm looking for us to rely on planning staff to do their jobs and tell us, this doesn't, this is not, you know, I wouldn't entertain this for these specific reasons.
Separate the cans from it.
Yes, and then we can take the time and hopefully get to the ones that may, you know, warrant further review quicker, because the cans are just gone, they're done.
And they know why, and they know publicly why. We can have a discussion at the dais, and if, if the votes aren't there and three people want to consider it, then it goes to a work session, and it goes in the queue. But this was just a public way.
Then we bring it to elect to consider. See, this is the part that I'm kind of having, we're adding another level to the application process. And, you know, by bringing, if two people on a future board, you know, wants to bring it forward, then we're going to have this discussion in public about whether or not, we're going to have a discussion in public on whether or not we should allow them to have an application.
Well, someone is making an application.
If I can finish, please, it, it sounds, thank you, it sounds onerous to me for the particular applicants. And, you know, I, I understand the intent here and, and agree about, you know, the public portion, part of it, but now we're adding three separate steps for applications.
The goal is to eliminate.
Well, it's the no, it's the maybe, and it's the yes.
If we took out the work session and made it a preliminary hearing, I'd be, I'd be fine with that. So we wouldn't have a, we'd have a preliminary hearing, rather than calling it a work session, we'd call it a preliminary hearing, it would be fully noticed.
Well, that's, I mean, what they're supposed to do.
Just don't call it a work session, and then it's all good, then I can support it.
May I be heard at one point?
The minute you call it a work session, you're, you're, I feel curtailing the powers of the supervisor.
It's actually not adding three extra steps if the answer's no, it's just inserting one step if the answer's no. As it's written, you're only doing.
Well, we have two existing steps, that's my point, counselor, and this would be adding another one.
If the answer's no.
And I understand, but it would have to be done, if two, e- even if the answer's yes by three and two people want to bring it, you know, and force that in public.
No, the, the way I wrote it, it remains two steps if the answer's yes. The way it's written, if the answer is still yes to go forward, you go, you schedule your public work session.
And then it's only one step if it's a no. So you've gotten a recommendation from planning, you decide right then and there, you're not going to consider it.
Right, you're only going to get that resolution when they, when they want to deny something.
Well, right now, it's a work session and a vote if it's no.
Right now, it's in the positive, it goes to, it's actually not a public hearing, it's a work session, that's, it's called public work session, which we've never understood why we call it that, because all work sessions are public, but it's not a hearing where we notice it.
So I don't mind the additional step, I'm okay with the additional step. If you have, let's say, a work session, then a preliminary hearing, and then if you got past that, then you had a public hearing. That would require public notice.
I wouldn't, I didn't bring this forward to add more steps to planning.
Well, you did, you basically did create.
No, I, I made it so that they can say no to something, and we can vote on it, and it can go away, and they can work.
I know, but you're saying no to a work session.
No, I'm saying no to an application that doesn't meet the standards of a recommended zone change.
I'm saying that we can already not put a work session together, because that's, the supervisor can say, I'm not going to put it on the agenda, I'm sorry, it's.
Code.
No, most you can't.
Yeah, code.
Well, we should fix that.
As well as, it's not just always one work session.
There shall be a work session, there may be a work session.
It sounds like you shall.
But who makes that decision?
But then you make that decision.
And then, and then after the work session, instead of going right to public hearing, it would go to preliminary hearing. So the public would then have full ability to vet it, and then the board, the town board would decide whether it should be a public hearing on it.
So then if you add there may be a work session, who decides if there's a work session on it?
The supervisor.
And so, so if you say no, that's you telling an applicant no, not the board.
Right, they can't get a work session then.
But it's, it's a function of the board.
But you could also put in a resolution to have a preliminary hearing.
I don't, I think you'd be in trouble if you did that, I don't think.
You're curtailing the board.
Say that again.
Then, then the case law would be against you.
What, what did you say?
You want to be able to just be like, no, or maybe, let's hear more about it.
I was saying, if you, if you proceeded the way that was just suggested, I, I believe then, you can't, you can't take the power, you can't have one person have the power to, to deny the ability to proceed on changes on application.
Well, the proceeding shouldn't be through a work session, the proceeding should be through a public hearing.
But the board has to be informed, make an informed decision.
That's a town board meeting, not a town board work session.
The case law that Kathleen was referring to, it just said that you don't have the, the applicant doesn't have a right to have a full-blown public hearings on a, on a change zone application. It gave the ability for a town board to streamline the, the process by denying at, at a work session or even prior to a work session, a review of the application, and the application gets reviewed, planning department says, wow, this is so conflicting with our comp plan and, and spot zone, whatever it is, makes strong recommendations to the town board, says, we recommend this doesn't, doesn't go any further than this. Town board looks at it, reviews it, says, okay, agrees or disagrees. If they, they agree, boom, the application is done at that spot, it's done. It's not adding, it's not adding a step, it's, it's actually.
I mean, the work session is, there's no public portion at a work session, it's not really.
I have a suggestion. Let's, let's just take the work session language off what we currently have and put that on after we vote for, to elect to consider. In other words, we put it in, we vote yes or no, and it's still two steps, and then they come to us with the work session about what, what the thing is.
That's what this is.
Well, not entirely, that, what this is would be adding.
You're saying you want to give them, like, more process in order to say no, instead of from the outset, be like, no, that's the difference.
I'm saying, keep what we have, but don't guarantee them a work session. Have the work session after we vote yes to consider.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I know, I know that, but we're kind of, we're, we're, we're scheduling a vote to elect to consider.
To elect not to consider.
To elect not to consider, but it's still a vote, so if you vote yes, you're electing to consider.
Yes.
So my question is.
So it is, it goes both ways, it's a yes and no vote, it's an up or down vote to either dash the thing, I, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree. I just see this as another layer, and I think we already have the elect to consider language in our code. Let's just take the work session portion off of it, have a vote on whether or not we're electing to consider, if we are electing to consider, then we have the full-blown work sessions and we consider the application.
So the elect to consider happens prior to the work session, is yours?
Yeah.
Where I have the problem with that is that.
Because if we don't, if we don't elect to consider, then we don't have a work session.
Change the work session to a preliminary.
Then we have another hearing and vote.
But you have, you have to know what you're electing not to do.
You have a public portion, it's no, it's, you're taking out a layer, you're taking out the work session, you're going to a pre-hearing where the public can actually comment.
Okay.
It sounds like we need to think.
We clearly need to discuss this.
Just ask me a question, if we have a work session on a project, right, and the applicant comes in, we do the work session, how do you find out if we want to entertain it or not moving forward?
A resolution.
Resolution.
So we're putting that resolution now before the work session?
Yes.
Well, we're giving the opportunity for that resolution, for the work session, or not.
Sometimes, we're saying, sometimes something comes up, and the way this happens all day long.
Which is followed by a resolution, which is followed by the application.
People come in and say, you know what, if I could change this over here, and we are not the ones to say yes and no. We say, well, you gotta, you know, you can find out if the board is interested in looking at this, and then they come to you and say, what do you think?
And with this, they then have a quick response as to yes or no.
With this, you say, no way, or you say, maybe, why don't you schedule for a work session? And then you say, we're, we're allowing you to come for the work session.
All this does is weed out the no's.
Yeah.
The work session, there's not a public portion in a work session.
I, I think, I think I understand your intent, I'm trying to figure out how to get there in a way that I feel doesn't change, you know, the powers or abilities of town supervisors.
And that's definitely not the intention to curtail any power of anyone, it's really just to, so that we have a quick and easy way, instead of having someone die a painful and slow death while they wait around for you to say yes or no.
The more public process, the better, in my mind, with these zone changes. There should be times when the public fully knows about it, and they can weigh in, you know, work sessions, they only allow the public to weigh in.
That's why we have a two-step process.
But if you had more of a town board meeting, a preliminary town board meeting, but, but we can do a resolution that would allow that preliminary town board meeting.
We probably won't do that, because that goes against what the case law says.
I would recommend just leaving it the way it is, if there, if the consensus is, I think, the better, legally, the better aspect is just leave it how it is, if there's no inclination to, at this time, do something like this, because adding another public hearing adds a formality to it that an applicant might.
Well, I still think there's a problem with the law, because it should say may have a work session.
You can't, because then you have to take a step.
Who's discretion?
You're obligated to once they make an application.
I'm obligated to schedule, I mean, it doesn't say when, and there's no timeframe, so I can just now put it on the agenda.
The concern was that the may would not be subject to transparency, that was the concern that we were trying to cure.
And who makes the decision, who makes that decision?
Right.
You have to have a decision maker.
This is my problem, it's always been, it's always been my concern.
That was why I was asking you.
I think there should be an addition.
Can I, can I speak?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's always been my concern when we have these applications, getting back to the can't do it, because it's not legal to do it. And when they come to you in planning, as an example, and want an application for a zone change, and you have the opportunity to say, yes, you can do this, or no, you can't do that, but you don't.
No, I would dispute that. We don't have the, we, we can tell you all the reasons why something is a bad idea, but we can't stop someone from making an application.
But now.
And that is their constitutional right, actually, we were sued under the First Amendment over stop and shop for this reason.
Agreed, so now, in order to, for the board to make a decision, an informed decision, I would want to know that. I would want to know ahead of time if an application has been made that you cannot say no to, but it has to come to us for a decision.
Every application is that way.
I would want to know that, and I think that's, that's where we're having a little bit of, that's where the issue is.
So that's proposed to you.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's proposed that you would get an application.
And I, and I agree with that.
So what you would get is a copy of the application, a copy of the plan, a copy of my memo saying, this is why you shouldn't even do this, and you had, schedule it, it would be in your resolution packet, and you would vote, we're not considering it. Or, wait a minute, I don't agree with that, I think this is a good idea, you know, I think this blah, 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 it's good. Why is this terrible, like, we can talk about this, I want to hear more, I think it should, so you vote no, and then the P, then the resolution fails. So then it automatically goes to work session. If you are not, if you are not voting affirmatively to squelch the thing, it goes to the next. Now we do do the, it shall go on for a work session. We're trying to get, if you're really just not going to do it.
To elect to consider.
Yeah, then you have a second chance to say whether you want it or not.
And then, once we elect to consider, then they can file their application.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's just three steps.
Then when you hear all facts, it goes to formal, and then you're really making the decisions, and then that's a formal.
We're just getting the nose to the no quicker.
Yeah, that's really what the intent was, if this is not getting there.
So that we're not tying up planning staff, we're not tying up applicants.
We can rethink how you want to do that, but that's our problem, is in the first instance.
I think it might be one or two words that just need to be changed, for me to be comfortable. Because if you want to have this process where the town, if a resolution is run under the town board, that opens up the pathway that will eventually, could lead to the public hearing, it's probably okay, but where it's basically sending it to work session. And it's really, the problem's really not just in Cindy's, you know, change, but in the underlying law that requires a work session.
Yes, that's the, that's the real issue.
So if we change that process to this resolution, that would then allow for the public hearing, but first they'd have to get through a, a work session.
That's how it is right now.
It's, it's, it's still not perfect.
That's how it is right now. It is the way it is right now, we're trying to add a part where you get to say no more expeditiously.
Jim, you understand my issue?
I, but, but, yeah, but I, I think, well, if you're, if you're, if the supervisor's concern is that the supervisor can control the agenda, you still have the control of the agenda by whether you're going to allow this resolution that we're discussing onto the, it's good to proceed to the town board for a vote, correct?
Yeah, but I, I don't.
That's where you, that's where you still have that authority.
I can't stop a resolution from being submitted by a council person.
But, okay, but then that's, that's, all right, well, then maybe I misunderstood what you were saying earlier, because you were saying you were giving up some sort of power.
I mean.
It's only that I set the agendas for the work session.
What's that?
I set the agendas for the work session.
Oh, just for the work session.
And if we, and if we elect, if, if we don't, if we don't squash this and elect to not consider, then it, then it goes to the next for a work session, and you decide when and how it's heard at a work session. But still, you're right. You're not tied to a 30-day, you know.
I, I think it's a simple language change here.
So we can go back to the drawing board and try to figure this out and talk more to everyone personally, but I think whatever it is, obviously, would have to comport with the case law that has already been established as to what's possible.
But let's not lose sight of the intent, the intent here, at least from this perspective of this council person, I'd like to know what is, what is allowable and not allowable, it's not something that you, you would discuss, as I tend to understand, with an applicant. But I sure would like to know that, and, and generally I do, but sometimes I, I find I get surprised by work sessions. I have no idea that there's an application in front of us, because I don't really have the, the back, that background.
Well, they're not.
Well, they, but they sometimes do.
Well, the town clerk is supposed to submit the application.
It's at the table, but it's not officially in front of us.
Right, but it, put it in, because you need to be informed to make a decision.
When we get an application in, the clerk gives you the application.
Putting this particular thing aside, it really gets down to the powers of the chair or the board. So if you start passing legislation that says, if we pass this legislation, the supervisor shall put the item on work session, it's changing the powers of the supervisor, and I, there's got to be a way to fix that.
It's the opposite, though, right? It's, it's.
You are on a board, and it's not a mayor situation, it's a town board, and, you know, it is different.
Well, if you guys come to me and say, I would like this. If the council asks me to put something on the work session, I will do it, but it's still at my discretion.
Right, I have a different issue than, than the supervisor.
Councilman Bubian, this would give you that application with a written note.
No, and I understand that.
From planning?
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, I, I do have an alternative, and I believe a two-step process does the same thing, same, can get the same goal, rather than a three-step process. I mean, let's face it, these would be three vote. Are there issues with this? We are, we would be creating a third public vote on a change of application. What are most of our applications? It has to do with some kind of density or multifamily or, or affordable housing, I mean.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, however, in my, you know, short tenure here on this board, that's what they've been. And so, you know, we would be putting it out to the public three times, which is fine, and however, I think two times is, will do the same job. We can get the sense of the public if we do it. We don't necess, I, I do have an issue with the automatic work session, like, if somebody comes to you, they get to come to us. All right, you know, what, let's vote on that, and then have the work session, and, you know, and then we can, that first vote is elect to consider. It's elect to consider.
No, we're telling you in the negative, elect to not consider.
Right.
I understand that, but a yes is a positive, so let's, we can't just say it's a no.
Yeah, but if you say yes to that, then you're starting them on the map to a yes.
Right.
If you say no, it means you are not electing to not consider, you are electing to consider. So you're either voting.
It's a false statement.
Yes, we're not, we're not looking at this, or no, we want to hear more about it.
Which under, under the current code.
Right now, we have the resolution after the work session.
After the work session.
Our concern is.
But you don't have it, you have elect to consider in the, may I just like, just one second? You have it in the pos, in the affirmative, we're going to consider this as a formal zone change. We're actually suggesting that your powers allow you to say, we're not considering this in the first instance, and that's the end of that. Or, maybe we're considering it, let's have a work session and hear from this person, and what they are trying to propose, and get more information, and then decide if they're going formal. If you're in that maybe, you're probably going to elect to consider it.
It's actually saying, we're not electing to consider. And one of our concerns is that these applications get on this path, and they get so far down the path, it's difficult to say no. I get it, well, we're making the path longer, I mean, that in-between elect to consider vote is going to be the de facto vote on, on an application.
No, we're just saying, yes or no, yes or no, we're just making this up, you may get a work session, but we're deciding on that first.
The first thing is, close the door, we're not, what, no. The second thing is, maybe, let's have a work session.
Right, which is, which is the intent of the elect to consider that we currently have in our law.
Only attached to the second thing, there is no third without a second.
There's a real distinction between a work session and a town board public hearing.
This is what the town board prior tried to do with this work session idea, because of this, it got so far down the road thing. This is why we have that middle of the road step. Now, can we just fix that? And at that point, say, pull the plug, we, we don't want to hear anymore about this, we're good, you can do that.
That's, that's what we currently have.
It's already there. We're trying to say, at the first instance, you also have the legal ability to just say, no, if you want.
Okay, I.
And there is no three, there is no two more steps after that, it's just that's the end of it.
So, so right now, so right now, after that work session, either there is a resolution to elect to consider, or there is nothing. So then there's nothing, and there is no public transparency to nothing. I like this because it puts that, why are we not electing to consider, it's in writing, the applicant knows right away, and they're not waiting around for that work session.
Which, which is the intent of the elect to consider in the first place?
I have no problem with that, so we have the work session, if there's a work session, and then you can't just simply vote on elect to consider, you'll have to do a public hearing on electing to consider.
No, I wouldn't want to add any more steps.
I think that's the purpose of the work session.
I, I think we clearly need a little more time with this.
But the work session doesn't have the benefit of.
The public of the public.
If you're not going to say yes, why are you riling everyone up to a public hearing?
Well, the application process.
There's a hearing on the elect to consider.
There is a notice requirement when they first file the application, correct?
I don't know why that's negative, why, why, if you had a hearing on the ele, if somebody wants to consider it.
Because you're considering it, whether you realize it or not, you want.
You have to have a hearing to, you're proceeding the vote to consider, has, has to be a noticed public hearing.
If it helps, I think the, the prior town board had felt that a hearing added more formality to it and required applicants to perhaps prepare and expend monies on preparing for that public hearing versus a work session, which was more typically a more informal discussion-type atmosphere, where the board would get enough information to know whether or not this was something that they would entertain going forward. So that was the intent of the initial process.
That public hearing is going to end up basically being informal scoping session, where everyone's going.
It'll be the first town board meeting, it'll be a public hearing.
I know, but the concern is the public's ability to know about it and to be heard at it. And the work session isn't.
That's not to be concerned, the concern is that you have the ability to actually say no, if you wanted to. If board members were like, why are you putting this in front of me when I don't want to say yes to this, I don't like it, it's no good? You actually have the authority to just be like, we're not even doing this.
And we're providing irrational.
Not about affordable housing, about like, all, you know, industrial, this, that, there's all different zoning questions and categories, it's not, it's not that.
All different zoning, I understand that, but I wanted to bring that up, because that is an issue that's currently before the board on a, in a number of different applications. I think we need more time with this, is that fair to say?
It seems like the question lies a little bit as to, is it mandatory to have the work session? I believe it is.
And maybe, and maybe, because I'm coming to this for. I've already sat down with planning staff and legal and had these discussions, where we've kind of worked on this together, so I, I feel very comfortable with it, and so maybe everyone just needs more time to speak to, to planning and legal and understand the why and the how. I'm happy to hold off on it.
I think if, if we did those two changes, where we said, we change it to may in the current law, and we required a public hearing associated with the vote to consider, I would be, I would be fine with that. That adds to two additional steps. But it doesn't, it doesn't really lengthen the process, because before we actually both descend to a full public hearing, we've had public input on whether we should even consider it.
So if someone comes and pays money for an application and you never put it on, what do we do with that?
Somebody can put, a town board could, just, a court member could put in a vote, elect to consider. That would trigger a public hearing, you don't necessarily, a preliminary hearing, before we actually vote for a full public hearing on a more detailed application. So if you can have a work session, you're not required to have the work session. Well, you are required to have a public hearing on whether you're even going to consider it or not.[1763.21] it or not.
I think it would be great for the, for maybe to share the case law. And that way, that would be a good starting point. And then, you know, it's going to be a new year, new you, we can figure it out next year.
And I just ask you guys to go back and look at town law related to the powers of the supervisor and the ability to set the agenda for the work sessions.
And we also have local municipalities that have some similar laws in place, would like to see those.
A hundred percent, and I believe that we did look at.
Yeah, no, I mean, for, in order to make an informed decision.
It's still a town board meeting.
Yes, a town board meeting is not only one session, it's different.
It's just the, right now, the way works.
They're different types of meetings. One has public portion and one does not.
The come-to-work session, you are considering it, it's in the paper, it's out there.
And that's the intent, is to be able to say no, early on, before it gets inertia.
If we receive an application that is just completely counter to the comprehensive plan, planning wanted the opportunity to offer a recommendation to the board to just not consider the application because of that very reason. Right now, they come right to a work session. I know I'm regurgitating what we've all been speaking about, but it's just, we want to point that there isn't adding more steps, we're just informing the board a little earlier.
I'd like the ability to not have to do a work session. That would be great. I won't schedule a work session if something is clearly.
This is how we get to that point.
But when you have that work session, now everybody's going, what are you doing? This is bad, you don't like it.
We can't only give a recommendation, we can't say no, so we have to figure out when's that point in the process that you then decide no.
Right, we're trying to get to that point.
No, it's not forcing, I don't see if that will. I think it's well within the, like.
Well, we, at least here publicly, we're telling you, it's an issue. It's an issue because we, you know, you, on the one hand, people aren't guaranteed a due process, you, the code right now gives them a certain level of process. And if you don't want to get embroiled in a whole thing, and you wanted to just be like, we're good on, we don't want to do this right now, you actually have that on your side, and you're not using it. It's a tool that you have in your toolbox that you don't even know you have.
Yeah, ENC, a term that I wasn't familiar with. Elect not to consider is a term that many municipalities are very familiar with.
Yeah, which is just a tool to say, we don't want to, like, you know, like the Supreme Court doesn't want to take up a case, we're not doing it.
I mean, it's similar, it's not.
It's alluding to it, but we don't actually call it out. And that, that was the purpose of this, was just to lay it out a little bit more clearly. At these points, you can say, ENC.
Right now, we have the elect not to consider comes after the work session.
No, you have elect to consider in the positive.
It's whether, it's elect whether to consider.
You have it in the positive, we're suggesting you add one in the, in the negative, where you can just say no. And if you don't want to just say no, and you want to hear all about it, and then say yes or no, that's fine too.
And it's invisible to the board.
But we're trying to say, you do have that ability if you want to employ it in the code. And that's it, and we'll come back.
I have it, I have it on today on the agenda for Tuesday to notice a public hearing. It's not until January tenth, I'd like to keep it on because I think that gives everybody like over a month now to sit down with planning and familiarize, and if you don't want to vote for it, you don't vote for it, but.
I'm certainly willing to work with you to, to change it in a way that accomplishes your goals without diminishing the powers of the supervisor to set the agenda at the work sessions. So, we can.
I don't think this does that.
I don't see it that way.
I don't either.
I think it's, what you're trying to do is make it visible to the board and give us the ability to make a decision to say no, as opposed to just having to say yes and something gets inertia until the public weighs in.
You want the ability to say, no, I don't want to even have a work session on the matter.
With, with.
With recommendations from planning staff.
With recommendations from planning staff.
Strong recommendation, absolutely, absolute recommendation.
So that we don't have to go over something that at the end results.
Which is, to me, is very different than saying, no, I don't want to have a public hearing on a matter, saying, I don't want to have a work session on the matter.
If they're recommending that we don't entertain something, I'm going to say nine times out of ten, I'm going to take their recommendation because that's what they do and that's, you know.
You don't always have to take our recommendation, of course.
We don't.
That's the other side of that. We recommend all kinds of things that you may or may not want to do.
And what's the scenario that would cause us to recommend not considering this? It most likely goes completely against a plan that you've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on and coordinating with the public to come up with recommendations. And now this application is counter to that. And that would be a scenario as to why we'd recommend not pursuing this.
And this is us electing to not consider with the backing of very specific reasons why. It's not willy-nilly, it's not, you know, we just don't like it.
There might be a minor tweak to it. If that elect not to consider would forbid the public hearing.
It does.
Rather than the work session, then there's no need to have a work session when you know you can't have a public hearing. So, we might be able to solve your, my issue by just a minor tweak.
I don't think your issue is an issue, I think.
It is.
I think.
It is, it changes the power of the supervisor.
It does not, because if it becomes a work session item, then you schedule it, and you decide when it gets heard. You still have that power.
I think that you could.
It's the board taking the, taking the initiative on.
You could have a, a board member could submit a resolution requesting that a change of zone not be considered, in which case, there shall be no public hearing set on that matter. That solves.
No work session. No work session.
No, that's.
Well, then we can change the initial way we do it.
Can you legal, is that?
Yes.
Oh, they made the work session idea?
No.
So, we're going back now to.
What Kathleen was trying to say was, we did the work session because it's more informal, a public hearing is much more formal, but people are like, you're dragging this out, we've heard this ten times, they get like sick of it too.
And why drag the, why drag the applicant to a public hearing on something that's so out there that we don't agree with?
Look, I've been doing this for twenty-plus years. I've never heard of a time or resolution that would say, supervisor, you must put something on a work session agenda, or you must not put something on a work session agenda. Public hearing is very different. And, you know, I need time to look at that issue, but on its face, I have an issue with it, and I think that it would be better accomplished, if you want to do this, elect not to consider, that's fine, but make it so that you cannot have a public hearing, not, you cannot have a work session. And then, there's no reason to have a work session if you're already precluded from having a public hearing, which would follow the work session.
Okay, that sounds fine. Does that sound right?
Oh, we can talk to the sponsor.
I got this yesterday, I'd like to read it a little bit more.
Take your time, that's why we're here.
And fully understand, and before we put it out to, you know, on, for a public hearing. You know, because we're debating things and, you know, really, I'd like to, I'd like more time on it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I would like to see the case law also.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time.
We could add a sentence that says.
We're going to have another work session on this?
Notwithstanding this vote, the supervisor may still go ahead and schedule a work session. I mean, I don't know if there's support for that, but.
Do something like that, May, or, you know.
So, notwithstanding that the town board resolution said not to consider, the supervisor felt strongly, he could still schedule that work session.
But yes, that's a possibility, that's a possible place.
I would not curtail your powers.
Right. That's, again, it's really, it's not the overarching, it's not the overarching issue of public process on change of zone applications.
What if we.
And I don't want people to spend a lot of money preparing for something that's going nowhere, but I also have to protect the power of the supervisor.
How about we have a work session where all these things, and it's not like these big, sort of, presentations, where it's just like, the board has a stack of applications and goes, this is good, that's not, this is good, that's not. And then we have the ENCs for the ones you don't want to do, and the work sessions we schedule for the ones you do.
And we can review them quarterly or something, so there's some kind of system to it.
And we could do that on a regular basis. You want to do that?
That's, that's sort of what Work Haven does, quite frankly.
You could do some sort of routing for comments.
But again.
You could do it in a public forum where people are watching us do this, so they have a pile, you have a pile, and we say, yes or no, yes or no, and then we put a resolution on that says elect to not consider X, Y, and Z, and then the other ones just get scheduled.
Well, I would, I would ask council whether or not that would open up a door for.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of conveying legal advice to the client on camera, I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, it doesn't have to be on camera, does it have, can it be a committee? Do we have to schedule it? If it's all of you, then I can't, you know.
If you come to a work session and say, I've received a number of requests for zone changes, can, you know, how do you guys feel about it? Then we're not taking a formal vote in a work, in a work session. We could sort of say, I don't think we should consider that one, but somebody that would have to put in a resolution.
Which is a vote.
No, we'll follow it up with resolutions.
Supervisor, that's a vote.
But these are votes, these are us saying basically, yeah, put that in the not-consider pile, like, we're making a decision.
But we would be telling you our memo, we'd be there doing it in person.
We could essentially just agree with your findings.
It's really not that different.
It's not really that different, but at least it's a little bit.
Turned into resolutions to consider or not to consider.
Yeah, it's just, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
But when I said that, it made sense, right? And that's really what this is doing.
Can I read this before?
You can read it and take your time, and we're not.
I will withdraw it, and you, everyone can have time to look at it and read it and.
But we do need a better.
Like I said, I take for granted the fact that I've been needing them for.
We definitely need.
We've been saying that for years.
The goal is to kind of streamline the process on.
Elect to consider and go on for weeks and weeks.
And then something gets inertia, and the next thing you know, it's out of control.
Right, right, right. The public gets confused.
And then we have the public showing up to something that we weren't supportive of anyway.
Right, they think you're endorsing the application and.
And I get the goal, and I get you want to be able to not even waste time on a public hearing on a work session if you know that it's a nonstarter. I get that, but also, I have to be concerned about the setting of the work session agendas.
Janice, I think Janice has it right. I think, and I believe my, and I can check back, we'll review the law and process.
If you want us to do some kind of committee, and then the committee makes a recommendation.
Well, I kind of thought planning was your thing, you know. Your recommendations has to come from people that know what they're talking about.
No matter what, we'll tell you what we think. But I'm just looking for a way to get to something early on, so that it's not languishing, someone knows whether or not it's.
I fully believe that if everyone takes the time and sits down with you, like I did, they'll understand it, and, because the things I'm hearing are what we're proposing, they're just tweaked different ways. But we're all getting to the same.
If you change it just simply to not prevent the works, to, not to prevent the work session, but prevent the public hearing, I think that solves the issue. Because, no, I'm not going to set.
But you have to have the work session to get to the public hearing.
No, yeah, right, well, I wouldn't set a work session on something that was precluded from having a public hearing. What would be the point? There's already a resolution saying there can't be a public hearing on it, so.
Okay.
What's the point of having a work session?
But we're not saying they're not having a work session, we're saying we're electing not to consider.
Good Thursday morning.
The work session language is not going at all.
Why would I put something on a work session agenda where the board has passed the resolution not to consider?
Exactly, and that's what we're doing.
Right, but you're, you're saying not to, not to consider through a work session. That's the point.
No, 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 we're electing not to consider, and if we elect to consider, then you schedule the work session. If we elect to not consider, there is no work session.
We should change that to May.
Okay, we can do that.
May.
All right, let's, I'll withdraw it.
We'll do small work, and I think you'll get to the case law.
I truly believe you'll get to the same point.
The case law, but.
It doesn't.
Well, just in terms of, I think they would help, help read it, maybe.
And if the town board, it feels differently about his own change than the supervisor, and the supervisor doesn't want to put it on a work session, they should be able to get a public hearing anyway.
This case law just says they can make these decisions, you can make this decision upfront.
So, the case law says you can say, no, right away. You don't have to do anything more than just say no, if you don't want to do it.
So, and we change it to May, then they just, you know.
Well, so the situ, let's say the supervisor is absolutely against a zone change, but the board all wants it. So, the way the process is now is, I mean, the supervisor doesn't put it on the work session. There should be an ability for the town board to say, no, we want a public hearing on this change of zone.
That's that whole elect, elect to not consider.
They should be able to get around the supervisor's opposition by a public hearing, not by a work session, but by a public hearing. So, I think.
I'm not sure I understand that, but we, I don't want to labor it, we'll talk about it online, and thank you, sorry, it confused us, but we do need to figure this out, so we'll be back in January.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anywhere?
Sure.
I'm here next Thursday.
So on.
Okay, so, eleven fifteen. Yeah, we're a little bit behind schedule. Proposed change to chapter one seventy-eight, East Quogue water quality sunset provision? All right, and we have Deputy Supervisor Frank Sapo and Kathleen Murray, Deputy Town Attorney. So, Frank, you introducing this, or?
Yes, I will, but thank you for electing to consider. I was paying attention. I just wanted to update the board on this East Quogue water quality project that's been going on for a little bit more than three years now, and make a recommendation, and that's why Kathleen is with me to review, if you want to consider the recommendation, what the process would be. I prepared this little one-page, well, it's two pages back and front sheet, just to give you a little historical perspective, because not every board member.
Yes.
Not every board member was present when we started this process. The process really began with a notification that we got from the Suffolk County Health Department that they were doing testing in the community of East Quogue and other places, not just East Quogue. And they were beginning to detect some evidence of what they call emerging contaminants in the groundwater in that community. The town, prior to this program, initiated an opportunity to bring bottled water into the community. We started by delivering that ourselves, then contracted with a vendor to deliver at the request of the residents, that they could request water being delivered on a regular basis. We then approached Assemblyman Thiel to see if the water quality fund could be used to assist in any portion of helping these community members to bring public water to their residences and businesses. Fred offered legislation that modified the water quality program and added language, paraphrase, to allow the fund to pay for water mains, extensions, and connections. So we drafted the town board, Kathleen drafted legislation to define how we would apply that money. Once we got the legislation approved by this, by the governor, signed by the governor, the town board allocated $4 million of Water Quality Fund for the purpose of this program. But we didn't have a program in place or defined under the law until chapter 178 was written and adopted by the town board. In that chapter 178, we allowed for money to be spent with the Suffolk County Water Authority for the construction of water mains. We would also cover the cost of what's called TAP fees, which is the vault in the street where the residences are connected and small businesses, and then also to allow for the residences to connect to that water tap. And we would reimburse them for that expense. We launched the program in 20, the summer of 2019, and we began to process applications. We did some outreach into the community with the help of Suffolk County Water Authority. We sent letters to all of the residences in the mapped area. And also Suffolk County Water Authority had some of their staff go door to door and deliver information. With Janice's help, we developed a process for people applying for reimbursements with some credentials to evidence what had been done, had been done by a licensed plumber, had Suffolk County Water Authority been properly informed of what they were attempting to do. And we began the process in 2019. That's when we processed our first application. Subsequently, the town board became aware of two things. One, that the map created by the Suffolk County Health Department did not encompass all of the hamlet of East Quogue. And you guys modified the boundaries to include all of East Quogue. We also noticed that some applicants were seeking compensation for projects well in excess of $10,000 for just their connect. In fact, I think I noted it here, there were 10 of them by the time the board was able to respond, and those 10 alone resulted in $150,000 in cost to the town for their connections. So the town board accepted that recommendation and modified the same chapter to limit the expenditure of reimbursement to $10,000. We've continued that program up through this year. We've connected 86 residences out of the 107 that were identified. We've done multiple outreaches during the course of that time in a variety of different ways. But we have not, well, let me back up a little bit. We, Suffolk County Water Authority completed the project, including an extension that was not part of the original scope of work along Lewis Road, so that those residences in the community could have the opportunity to connect. And most of them did, not 100% of them, but most of them did.
That was a connection, right, between two different water mains and we, yeah.
Yeah, that was a, a water main, a connection between a northern one and a southern one.
Which helped the system in general, yeah.
From their perspective, yes, but because that area was not within the original scope of the, the map that we use for our legislation developed by the Suffolk County Health Department, that area was not technically eligible for the rebate, but the board did both. They added money, or they added the scope, to the scope of work so that the main could be put in place. And then we included that geographic area in the map for the, the chapter 178. And I think we put a, a new map in its place. The, the, the project was estimated to be about $4 million. That's what the town board allocated. The construction, including Lewis Road, cost about $3.3 million. We spent approximately a half a million dollars in reimbursements to the 86 people who were connected, bringing the total cost to around $3.7, $3.8 million to the town. We did at the time also apply for a grant from the Environmental Funding Corporation, a little bit over a million dollars. We were awarded that grant, and now we have received that grant. It's paid back, or reimbursed the Water Quality Fund to that, for that amount of money. So the total cost to the town out of the original $4 million was about $2.7 million. Approximately 1.2, 1.3 million dollars below the allocation that the town board had indicated. Since August of this year, well, in 2022, we've only received five applications. Since August of this year, we've received zero applications. In communication with.
I'm sorry, break, does that, just for the board's application, is that, is that included in the 87, the 80?
Yes. Eighty-six is a total, and what I'm recounting is what's happened so far this year since January 1 of 2022. Those applications, the most recent one in August, and that's already been processed and reimbursed. We've received no new applications. We've contacted the Suffolk County Water Authority because the process is if you're a resident and you want to get connected to public water, you first contact Suffolk County Water Authority. And we've, our office, with, again, with Janice's help, has developed a relationship with the person who processes that. And they communicate with us heads up, this person is inquiring about a connection. We've gotten no communication from them. I checked with them about a week or so ago, and they have not received any requests from within that community for further, for extensions or connections to public water. So that being in the consideration, I, I would like to suggest to the board that we sunset the program. And with Kathleen's help, we've laid out a timetable where if you want to consider that option, we would notice a public hearing after the first of the year and recommending a sunset date of April 1st in 2023, allowing the full first quarter where information would be available for anybody who last minute thinks they want to get connected. They would have a four-month, approximately four-month period of time to still access that, that program. And the fund is obviously still available and healthy enough to support any additional requests for connections that we might get. Kathleen has prepared a draft, I think I have it here, a draft legislation for you to look at. And I'll ask Kathleen if she wouldn't mind just pointing out this summary, unless there's some initial questions from the town.
I, I have one suggestion that we take the date, the sunset date from May, April 1st and put it to May 1st. Depending on the kind of winter that we could have, it could physically be very challenging to install water mains if we have one of our bad winters where we have permafrost until, until St. Patrick's Day.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. This is not about extending the contract with Suffolk County Water Authority. We are not asking to extend the, for them to add any more water mains or vaults or any other infrastructure. We're simply asking for the program that allows me as a resident to connect to that water main. So your point is well taken.
Well, that, that would entail hookups in their, in their lawn.
Yeah, and, and the process almost exclusively, there's been no trenching. It's all done. I think the common word is torpedoed underground, but that's, that's a consideration we.
Okay, you still need to dig holes for those, but.
But would this, if you apply by April 1st, it wouldn't matter when they were able to put it in? Your application would need to be in by April 1st?
I'm not sure how it's written in the legislation, but.
So, yeah, we can look at the language, and I'm happy to amend it if the board feels there's a better way to say it. It's, hopefully you have it in front of you. It's just one provision at the bottom, subsection D, sunset provision. The provisions of this chapter and the rebates available there and shall no longer be available after April 1st, perhaps May 1st, 2023. Applications received on or after said date will be returned and shall not be received nor processed by the town.
So as long as you apply by the first, I'm reading that.
Yeah, that's the way I read it. You're, you're open to accept your application if you send it.
Because you have to apply, but the time to do that may, may vary after the application.
What I'm saying is as long as your application is received by April 1st.
It's a good application.
You're good, and it doesn't matter if Suffolk County can't do it until June.
I was thinking of installation time.
Yeah, and to, just to further clarify, if, in, in most cases, people when they apply have gone pretty far down the road because neighbor speaks to neighbor, city speaks to neighbor. There's a lot of community communication. So the application, they have a plumber lined up, they have contacted Suffolk County Water Authority, they have all of the nuts and bolts that they need to do. As soon as, and our guideline to them is, submit your paperwork, but please do not proceed until you've actually received notification of approval for reimbursement. Because you, if you proceed prior to approval, no matter when you set your application, we're not paying for it. And we have not had one issue with that criteria during the whole process. So that would, that would continue here as well.
What happens, like, two years from now, somebody who's not connected to public water, their well tests positive for PFOS or whatever it is, is there still a mechanism by which, because the CPF law does allow water quality money to be used to connect people with those emerging contaminants, I guess we could potentially reauthorize it?
You could. I would imagine that's, that's up to the town.
Yeah, it could come back to you. Require a public hearing, but we could strike that sunset provision and, and just allow it to live again.
Or have it as a new project. It's just a new project. It's not part of this whole program. It's a, a new person with a contaminated well with these emerging contaminants.
So do we have any, any knowledge of the remaining numbers of, of people on well water right now? Have they, have they gotten tested?
I, I don't know about the second part of your question, John, but the first part of your question, the number of 106 is provided to us by the Suffolk County Health Department. They were the ones who had the information of who's on private drinking well, private wells. I trust that number to be accurate.
106? 106?
106. Within the mapped area, that doesn't mean there's someone further west or further east. That's not on, that's on the public, not on public water.
Outside the.
But within the designated area, that's the number that was provided to us by the Suffolk County Health Department. And we've gotten an 80% return. That 86 out of 107 is approximately 80%. And we found that the, the ones who don't apply are either residences that are in some kind of a, a, a state situation where the son and the daughter and the nephews and the cousins are passing properties around. There's not an interest or a nice, at least they're not a concern about the drinking water. Or they're residences that are very, that are infrequently used. In a couple of cases, there are one or two businesses that keep changing hands. So I think we've tapped, the one intended, the well pretty accurately and diligently. I have to compliment the Suffolk County Water Authority, although we helped create any new customers for them. We, they've been very, very helpful in the public outreach. They put people on the ground where we wouldn't have the resources to do that. Knocking on doors, putting door hangers, especially early on in the process, that was very, very helpful. And I think, as Cindy knows, because you were involved to some degree before you became councilwoman, there was a lot of conversation within the community about this program. So I, I don't think there's, anyone who's not done it is doing it for some reason above and beyond the not being aware.
I know there's one person that just doesn't want to pay Suffolk County for their water.
Well, there's, there's also, it's very interesting, when the program was originally done many, many years ago, decades ago, when the, you know, law was first, the county water authority was proposed, there were people who would not. And that number, that percentage almost equals the, the total percentage of people who did not hook up in the original system. It's interesting, and people just don't want it.
They don't, yeah, they had this amount of life.
Well, and understand that the board relieved. What the board relieved the community of is not only the cost to connect, but their share of the infrastructure costs, which in the cases where water mains were not accessible, Suffolk County Water Authority is happy to build a main for you and have you connect. But then you share a portion of that infrastructure cost for quite a long time.
And there, there was a lot of people on fixed incomes that there's no way they could have afforded to do this.
No, I think it was a very valuable service to the community. And I, I do believe it was very successful, and I think the town's ability to respond and communicate and then effectively implement is, is to be commended.
And I have to say, I have a water bill now, but my electric bill is cheaper.
Well, see, progress.
I mean, I think it's a, it's a great program, and it has helped a lot of people who may not have been able to afford to connect, you know. But the, the truth of the matter is that, you know, we didn't pollute the water, you know, and some other entities should have been providing safe drinking water. We're not in the provision of water. You know, the county is, you know, through, at least through the Suffolk County Water Authority. But, and the polluters, whoever put this chemical into the drinking water supply, we ended up footing the bill. We're fortunate that we have this program that gave us the ability to do that. So it, it worked out, but if we didn't have the CPF Water Quality Fund, we wouldn't have been in a position to do this. And it wouldn't have really been fair for these residents either. So we're fortunate to Assemblyman Thiel for creating the program.
Add to the 82% of the Suffolk residents difficulty capacity.
Right, but you know, as we find other areas that get impacted, well, most of the town now is on public water. You know, if they're impacted by other chemicals that aren't on the emerging contaminant list, this program isn't authorized.
So there's a future conversation that I anticipate having with the board when we have more information because this process included consideration that the contaminants were potentially from a source owned by the town. And we are spending a lot of money to investigate that potential source. And the early evidence is, maybe yes, maybe no.
Likely no.
Well, I, I'm not prepared to say that, Jay.
I am.
Well, that's okay. That's why you sit over there and I sit over here.
I'm with him.
But, but we will, by, by mid-2023 at the latest, I suspect, I will bring the results of the investigation that the town is funding on that site to the town board with its conclusions and its recommendations. And it may suggest that we want to have a discussion about other options that might be available to the town in terms of future potential contaminations in other parts of the community. And even, even this program that we are hoping that the board will see fit to sunset at this time.
And this was done in an abundance of caution with the, the detects that were, that were found on, on land owned by the town, but we, the area is close to the West Hampton Airport or Gabriski Airport and other places. So the, the contamination source is still yet unknown, and we did this, again, in an abundance of caution, in my view.
Just to correct the record, I, I don't think the contamination was found on the town land. It was found in the groundwater near the town land. I think it was just south of the town land at a certain, at a certain depth.
There were also test wells on the site owned by the town, which showed evidence of.
And one in particular.
In, in one out of four wells.
One out of four wells, but out of depth that could be passing underneath our property.
Yeah, and, and as I mentioned, that, that examination or investigation, as the DEC calls it, of that site is still underway. I don't think it's the time to draw any conclusions about what that information would reveal.
Yeah, I, I agree, and we're, we're also talking about some other areas that you indicated in the town that may have the same issues.
Right, well, I think the point that, you know, at the time, based on the DEC's testing, that there was at least a possibility that the town's property may have been involved. I think further evidence may show that it wasn't, but.
Well, and I think wisely, as Tommy John pointed out, wisely, the town took this action because it could, and out of an abundance of caution. And I think it was, there's no question in my mind that it was the, the right and proper thing to do.
Yeah, well, we were not required to make a finding that we were the responsible property, uh, party in order to use the CPF in this way.
Absolutely not.
You know, and that's important because there are other areas that may also be impacted clearly by sources that are not related to the town that may be requesting the CPF funds be used similarly. I think it's beyond the mayhem area.
And, and a federal government.
The board is in agreement that we should move ahead and.
Yeah, I like your idea.
I'm absolutely.
April 1st.
Terminate the, sunset the program in April of 23.
We'll do one final outreach to those 20 or 21 homes or.
We'll get a couple more.
We can, we can certainly do that, yes.
Well, I mean, it's likely you'll get more people over 10, 15 years. It's likely to do that. So, you know, and I think that's what the fund is here to do. We deal with it on a case-by-case basis when it happens.
Frank, thank you for putting this together. It's very thorough, and, but for your stewardship of, you know, this whole program, as well as the Damascus Road investigation. You've spent a lot of time on that. You've done an excellent job.
This portion of it couldn't be done without Janice's help because she's got a stack of applicants on her desk that would keep most doors open for a long time as a doorstop.
And I think, I think too, letting the public know that there is a sunset will maybe push those last few through to say, you know what?
Hopefully.
And I think that will be the core of our communication with, that the town board is considering sunsetting this as of, as of April 1, 2023. If you have any questions or interest in the program, contact.
And there are federal monies coming too. I mean, the, the federal government just allocated four or five million dollars for that, for the cleanup of the surrounding area, generating from, from the airport now. And there'll probably be more as they get further into it, I'm sure. Well, as Frank pointed out, it's, it's emerging chemicals, emerging chemicals. So it's a whole litany of chemicals. It's not just one specific one. No, right.
I think, I think honestly, I think, I think everyone's going to end up not on private wells at some point in time.
Well, you'd think that, but you know, 30, 40 years after the, there are still people that.
There's actually, they promulgated a list where it's not just any emerging contaminant. It's, it has to be on the state's list.
On the state's list. It's a big list.
It's a big list.
And it's going to, right now, as, as Jim was looking to, the governor is considering changing some of those standards and expanding itself.
The threshold, yeah.
Well, to Tim's point though, I think that, because we were in control of the program, the town was in control of the program and the funding, the average applicant didn't wait any more than four weeks, with rare exceptions, to get reimbursement for them, some of them in two weeks. If we were relying on federal money or state money, most of those people would have gotten three or four or five Christmas cards by now before they had their, their, their reimbursement. So I think that was very thoughtful of the town to do it that way.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to reviewing the draft agenda for the meeting on the 13th of December. So this is going to be a meeting at 1:00 PM here, Town Hall. And hybrid. Oh, that brings me up, I'm just thinking about, we held a special meeting and I never went to the computer on public portion earlier. Forgot that that was hybrid technically too.
Oh. Charles would have jumped, yeah, Charles would have, he would have jumped in, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right, Charles?
I, I know Steve's family was on.
Yeah.
Right. I should have asked if there's anybody in public portion or not. Okay, so this will be the hybrid. It'll be 1:00 PM on the 13th of December, which is next Tuesday. We'll have four public hearings. The first on the solar energy systems, chapter 330. The second, septic system rebates revisiting various provisions of the program. The third, enacting section 277, fishing prohibited from public bridges. And the fourth, the shelf, amending shellfish ordinance, chapter 278, to enhance enforcement ability, clarifying language, and increasing penalties for violations. And then we go to resolutions, 41840, accepts award and authorize supervisor to execute any and all documents for the Empire State Economic Development Grant Award for the Shinnecock Commercial Fishing Dock rehabilitation.
3,500.
3,000, somewhere is 3,537?
1% of the grant.
Hey, we'll take whatever we can get. 41872, accepts a donation of professional engineering services from Lockwood, Kessler, and Bartlett, Inc., associated with the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at a town facility. 41861. six one, authorized purchase of eight Ford police intercept utility from John Vance, um, Mortars, Inc. What is, what is utility, what, um, those vehicles? Yeah, it sounds like they're, they're vehicles.
Yeah, new patrol cars.
All right, John, you're next.
Town Board Resolution ID four one eight three six has to authorize the removal or replacement of epoxy floor coating at Rent Creek Park Activity Center from Suffolk County contract with Enicon Northeast APF.
Um, four one eight four nine, authorizes a supervisor to sign a contract extension for printing of tickets, pads, and envelopes with concept print.
Four one seven eight fours, authorize supervisor to contract extension with Payment Pavement Services Incorporated for engineering service to be provided to the Highway Department.
Four one eight nine three, to authorize supervisor to execute a renewal agreement with Nearmap U.S. Incorporated.
Four one eight three two, authorize supervisor to sign a contract for youth bureau program.
Four one eight seven one, authorize supervisor to sign contract with Nelson and Pope for professional engineering services related to two forty West Montauk Highway Hampton Bayes.
Four one eight zero two is authorized supervisor to sign a more satisfaction, satisfactions on community development. Lock, great.
Town Board Resolution four one eight seven four, authorize the installation of a catwalk across the scenic easement at the temesis known as twenty-three Wheaton Way Water.
Is that a CPF?
No, it's a.
It's not a CPF, Frank.
It's a private home.
So the, where, all right, so the crossing of scenic easement, I guess we own, subject to approval of trustees.
They're one of the only residents on that road that does not have.
So it's probably a walkway to a floating dock.
Yeah.
And they have to cross a scenic easement, or we just need to look at the language of that. Scenic easement, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, it mentions in the resolution here that it was, they did have the right to construct it, subject to the approval of the trustees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's in the easement.
It's in the easement, yeah, according to this resolution.
All right, I'll just check that. All right, four one eight seven, four one eight seven
It would take away the scenic. Is it a public catwalk?
No.
No, it's.
Four one eight seven three, authorizes the purchase of radios from the New York State OGS contract from Motorola Solutions, Inc. Uh, four one eight two three, authorize supervisor to execute twenty twenty-three fire protection contract with Bridge Quag, with the North End Quag Fire Protection District. Four one eight six five six, authorize supervisor to execute a twenty twenty-three maintenance agreement with Tracker Software Corporation for Pub Works Software for various town facilities.
Four one seven six five, authorize the supervisor to execute a consulting contract with H two M Architects Engineers Lance Aveing Etal for the wellhead treatment for iron and manganese removal at plant number four at the Hampton Bayes Board District.
Four one eight three eight, authorize supervisor to execute an agreement with High Tech Air Conditioning Service, Inc. for impact repairs located at the Town Hall Auditorium.
Four one eight seven five, authorize the supervisor to execute an extended agreement with L.K. McLean Associates, P.C. for on-call engineering services to be provided to the Highway Department for various townwide projects.
Four one eight nine six, authorize supervisor to execute new five-year ambulance contracts with Flanders, South Hampton Ambulance District, Southampton Ambulance District, West Hampton Ward Memorial Ambulance District, and Hampton Bayes Ambulance District, provide ambulance services to residents within these special districts.
I'd like to co-sponsor that code, Sunday.
Which one, the nine six?
Uh, yeah, ninety-six.
Four one eight nine six. Four one eight two seven, authorize supervisor to execute the twenty twenty-three fire protection contracts with the Village of Side Harbor with the Bay Point and Noyac Fire Protection District.
And that one as well, as well as the, sorry.
Four one eight eight four, authorize supervisor to extend a professional service agreement That's enough, please, until next year.
That's all, next year, right?
This is commencing January one through, yeah, December thirty-first next year. All right, four one eight, uh, nine eight is John's.
Town Board Resolution four one eight nine eight, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension with Dry and Best Transport Farming at Town Line Road, parcel Town Line Road, Sagaponix, Suffolk County Tax Map, if indicated on the resolution.
Four one eight two one, authorize the supervisor to sign an extended contract with L.K. McLean Associates for professional services to be provided for historic projects for the Community Preservation Department.
I'd like to co-sponsor that.
Certainly.
Am I already on there?
Yes, you are. Very good.
I'm starting to go into tomorrow.
Four one eight three one, authorize the supervisor to sign any and all agreements for award of Community Preservation Fund, twenty percent water quality improvement project funding to the Village of South Hampton.
I believe it's going to be discussed.
It's going to be discussed at the exact session. I ask Jackie to put this on.
Yep, okay. Uh, four one eight nine oh, award, I'm sorry, authorize supervisor to sign consultant agreement with Susan Western to assist the South Head of Town Police Department with the development of South Head of Town Police Department directives and implementation into the Lexapro software system. Forty-one eight eighty, authorize town controller to enter into rebate and incentive programs. Four one eight three five, recall and amend Town Board Resolution twenty twenty-two dash five oh two, asbestos abatement for thirteen eighty Flanders Road in Flanders. Um, thirteen eighty Flanders, is that Seven Z's?
No.
No, which one's that?
It's, uh, which one, eleven.
It's the Big Blue House.
Oh, the Big Blue House, okay.
Yeah, that was Brewster, Brewster House, yeah.
Retro, yeah. Four one nine oh two, rescinds resolution number two oh two two dash one oh three five, authorize the supervisor to sign a First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Leonard J. Marchese, M.B.A., CPA, to include the fire on the Montauk Point Coastal Risk Reduction Capital Project, FIPM.
Town Board Resolution ID four one eight five four, is the resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign a certified local government CLG agreement. Town Board Resolution ID four one eight nine two, is a twenty twenty-two notice to bidders for a twenty twenty-two Ford F two fifty XL service body.
Four one eight four two, twenty twenty-two notice to bidders for twenty twenty-three Chevrolet
Town Board Resolution ID four one seven seven four, is a twenty twenty-three notice to bidders for portable toilet rentals.
Four one eight seven nine, twenty twenty-three notice to bidders for requirements contract for security camera network infrastructure maintenance.
Four one eight five eight is being withdrawn.
What's going on with the?
It's, it'll be a trustee resolution.
Okay, because we've already given them CPF money for the current.
Yes.
Okay, uh, four one eight nine four, twenty twenty-three notice to respondents for professional surveying services. Is this a FIPM-related? I guess it's for anything we need of surveying for.
Probably, I believe, yes, I believe it's going to be FIPM-related. We did meet with,
this is from Ways of Municipal Works.
Yeah, I did meet with, Kelly and I met with Nick and and John McDonald the other day, primarily concerning the survey work for the FIPM projects of this.
So that's probably what that is. And four one eight two eight, amends the twenty twenty-two adopted budget for special events. Four one eight two two, amends the twenty-two budget for various departments. Housekeeping Resolution.
Resolution ID four one seven six nine, authorize dispersment of landmarks maintenance award for exterior repair and maintenance of the town landmark Josiah Foster House located in five sixty-six Montauk Highway East Quag.
Four one seven six two, authorize the settlement of the litigation matter, Town Southampton versus County of Suffolk, Suffolk County Department of Public Works and H and L Contracting LLC.
Town Board Resolution ID four one eight eight six.
That is just a, is, is that the water main?
Yes, that's the one where we're receiving two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're, we're receiving money for the broken pipe.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Uh, Resolution ID four one eight eight six, the resolution of adoption of any town code chapter one seventy-seven, septic system rebate and incentive program to revisit various provisions of the program.
I'd like to co-sponsor.
Sure. Okay, just, just hold on one second. So on that.
Well, this is a subject of public hearing, so I guess it'd be.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, my question actually would have to do with the money we're receiving for the broken pipe. So will that go into the water district? Um, as though it says, as determined by the town controller.
Yeah.
All right, uh, because I, I, I think the repair to the pipe was paid for by the water district and therefore the money probably should go back to the water district, but we can, we can discuss that. All right, sorry, John, you finished four one eight eight six?
Yes.
Oh, so on this. Resolution ID four one nine zero one, authorize feed waiver for East Fourth Congregation of Jehovah Witnesses. Town Board Resolution ID four one seven zero A, is authorize the town board to erect fence on town property with Beaver Dale Confronting Old Country Road. Town Board Resolution ID four one eight two four, is historic landmark designation of the property located at twenty-nine Dock Road, Reddenburg, beyond known as the McTina Duck Farm Rentals.
Forty-one seven seventy-two, release of maintenance bond in connection with the site plan from Berkshire Court East situated in Noyac.
Four one eight three four, approval of twenty twenty-two junk yard permits.
Did we ever review any of those, or?
Yeah, we do.
All right.
The fire marshal does.
Um, four one seven one eight, accepts retirement of Karen Subskovich, Associate Administrator in Municipal Work. Four one eight one two, appoints Camille Franklin, the Office Assistant in the Controller's Office. Four one eight seven six, appoints Daniel McCormick to Assistant Town Attorney in Community Preservation Fund. Four one seven one six, appoints Erica Trymarchi to paralegal position in the Attorney's Office. Four one eight seven seven, appoints Erin Foster to Associate Administrator on the Civil Service List. Four one four five three, appoints William C. Bundy to Records Management Assistant Position in Town Clerk's Office. And John.
Resolution ID four one eight two nine, a notice of public hearing considered historic landmark destination of its structure recognized as the Diamond Family Farmhouse located at fourteen Flying Point Road, alarm, Savicati Tax Office, indicated on the resolution.
Uh, Town Board Resolution four one eight one four, I will withdraw.
Yeah, I'm.
Give everybody some more time to.
Happy to work with you on.
Okay.
Meeting the intent.
Four one eight.
Uh, one four.
Four one eight one four.
Page fifty-eight.
Got it.
Okay, Town Board Resolution four one seven zero four, hearing to consider local law to amend three twelve nine of the Southampton Town Code to make intersection of Spires Avenue and Jones Road in East Quag a four-way stop.
I would like to co-sponsor that, okay? Sunday?
Yes.
I'm just trying to find this in my agenda.
Two sixty-eight.
Right now, it's two-way stop.
Page sixty-eight, four one seven zero four.
Sorry.
It was just, yeah, like, two days ago, so it's a two-way stop, that, right?
Yeah, skipped a tag, that's cool. Okay, so, I'm sorry. Co-sponsor on that? You'd like to co-sponsor? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Tom, how is Miss Reviewing it? Is she going to present it? How it's worked?
That's it? That's your problem?
That's it.
Twenty-seven pages of that, Bob.
So, all right, are there any other add-ons?
Yeah.
All right, so, everybody okay with that agenda? All right, so we're gonna move over, I guess, move on to updates. Let's see, we, uh, sworn a new police chief. That's a pretty big deal. Um, it's been lots of tree lightings, too, various churches, windmills, windmill, uh, the college is really nice. I feel like every night it's another location, another tree lighting. Um, but the, the Big Duck, of course, was, was terrific, uh, and a bunch of you were there at the Big Duck. Um, so the, the focus groups continue in Hampton Bayes today at four P.M. I have a ten-person group at four, five, and six, and it's, they've been productive as, as I've told you, so, and then the fourth one will be next Thursday, uh, twelve fifteen, starting at four P.M. You know, then I'll, I'll just have to make a decision. If there's still lots of people who want to participate and couldn't, maybe we'll go into January.
In fact, there's some spots, slots available, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
There are open seats?
Yes.
I won't be, I won't be insulted. That's good, actually, you know, it's, I, they've been really great conversations we've been having, so. Um, so it would do a reminder of town board meeting schedule for the rest of December. We're meeting on the, the thirteenth, the thirteenth, that's a town board meeting at one P.M. On the fifteenth will be our last work session of the year at ten A.M. Um, the work sessions of twelve twenty-two and twelve twenty-nine have been canceled or will be canceled. December twenty-second, I will not be here, but there will be a special town board meeting at ten A.M. Uh, that's the board meeting regularly scheduled for twelve twenty-seven has been canceled. So I guess Frank is going to chair that meeting, all right, so Deputy Supervisor Zepone will chair that. Um, I, you know, John's probably going to talk about the, the changes to the rebate law, but that's really important, so we don't, we haven't sent out the ten ninety-nines. We don't typically send them out anyway because of the way we, um, been structuring it. We've been giving the grant money to the contractors, so we don't do ten ninety-nines associated with that, but I'll check with the Controller's Office and make sure that they're fully aware, um, that they're not going to be taxable these grants for water quality. That's very important. Um, I think of anything else, uh, nothing really that I can think of, so, um, I'll, I'll kick it down to you guys and I'll look at my calendar if there's more things.
I just have briefly, East Quag hosted their hopefully first annual holiday on Main on Sunday. It was supposed to be Saturday night, but it got rained out, so they changed it to Sunday afternoon. Um, it was a really fun event, a lot of the community out, and um, they actually did a nice list. They had a nice big sign made up, and, and the top of the nice list was the town of Southampton, so you're all included in that, and they, they were very appreciative of the, the help and support they got from the town to host that event, and hopefully it'll be annually.
Yeah, like the supervisor says, we're all over the place, tree lighting, parties, you know, just meet and greets. It's been, you know, very busy, so looking forward to the holiday break. Uh, John?
Well, yeah, lots of, lots of events. Yeah, the, just to add to, I don't know if I need to, we've been talking about this on the septic system, but the IRS finally gave a concurring decision with the Secretary of Agriculture. But one thing that people should know is that part of that decision will allow for a three, three-year retroactive remedial return, which I think is a big deal. We do, in fact, have people that have gotten 1099s from the county, applied for septic system rebates from us, doesn't, didn't apply to the rebate program here, people didn't get hit as badly, but those people who did, did avail themselves of the grant money from the county are also eligible, so just so that...
And you can go back three years, so you get a credit or a check.
Yeah, you could file amended return, that's what the IRS will allow them to do, so that'll be spelled out blankly, I don't want to, don't want to...
So you could get a refund potentially.
Potentially, yeah, depending on what they filed, so that's a, that's a big deal, and so it actually times in perfectly because we're going to be talking about expanding our, our IA system plan, so the timing is perfect. You couldn't hope for a better, better situation than that in that order, so...
I'm sure it dramatically impacted a lot of people's tax returns, you know, $25,000 1099 on somebody who's making...
Not just tax returns, it affected, it affected parents with college financial aid.
Yeah, and it also changed the tax bracket of some people.
Of course, yeah, if somebody, average guy's making 75,000, he's got a $25,000 1099 on top of that, boom, it hits them hard.
So, and we can thank Senator Schuer's office for that, they, they worked really hard on it, although the legislation had been pending for a long time, they just went ahead and found this was, got Secretary of Agriculture...
That was a good move.
Makes it happen, so...
But there's also, yeah, you know, Kevin McDonald has been a strong voice in this, and Fred Thiel, and actually, County Executive...
A lot of people involved.
County Executive Belong, I think Adrian Esposito, I mean, there's been a lot of people who've been pushing for this change, and, you know, couldn't believe that these things were subject to tax.
Well, it's, it's also a subject that comes up all the time.
Made no sense whatsoever.
Disinventivizing, you know, what it causes to, so we didn't want to go out far with the program because of that, so it's, it's just a, it's, it's nice to see when something sounds like a movie.
Common sense applies.
People are putting these systems in for the greater good.
Right, right.
Protect the environment, they shouldn't have to then pay taxes.
Absolutely, and certainly didn't impact, didn't, didn't, you know, increase their assessed value of their properties, it's kind of silly, you know, so...
No, but it did improve the quality of the day.
Right.
And the drinking water supply.
Yeah, well, the next step is insurance, because, you know, we haven't been tested on these systems either, so if they, you know, systems are lost in a hurricane, technically it should be part of the assessed value of the property, but, well, you know, that'll be an interesting, that's also a subject that's come up, but this was the big hurdle, this was the major hurdle that was overcome, so thank you to everyone who worked on that.
Anything else?
Two years, no, that's about it.
Tell me, John?
Yeah, we think that those systems would go under the mechanicals in a home, like a heating system and cooling system and electric system, so that could be an easy one, definitions.
Well, it was, it's actually, the issue was ownership of the, you know, because of the grant and a rebate, who actually owned the, owned it, and that's, that's still in question, so it'll be interesting, I think, the legal argument.
That's an issue that's going to come up as the county tries to create this county-wide sewer district.
Yeah.
Is your septic system, your IA system, part of a sewer district, in other words, not belonging to you, but county infrastructure on your property?
Who's going to replace it if it gets damaged, that's the real question.
It's going to be an interesting question, I'm sorry, Council.
That's a significant question, and I didn't think that was an issue, who owns your septic system? I own mine. Okay, wow, thank you for that thought on the ride home. Yeah, Long Beach, this weekend, 10 o'clock, we're planting grass, want to thank Kristen Dullos and Parks Department and Cornell Cooperative Extension, we're going to have a bunch of volunteers out there, hope to see you all there. It's going to be a balmy 43 degrees, and the wind will be blowing, and we will be planting beach grass. Beach grass is important, it captures the sand on the beach, we want to build up small, you know, kind of mounds of sand rather than having it go across the road. If you know the area, you know what I'm talking about, we want to keep it on the beach side. Once it hits the road, we can't put that sand back on the beach easily. So that is at 10:00 AM this Saturday, and our plea from the board, please shop locally. When you shop locally, you support residents in the community. We have great stuff on our main streets offered by our merchants, so happy holidays, shop locally.
Just quickly, where is the, 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 the,